We'll go ahead and start our joint work session between the Sandy City Council and our Planning Commission. Before we go into our city council meeting tonight, though, I will go through our agenda. Pause briefly over different items if our council isn't clarifying questions for staff before we get into it this evening. And we will ask for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Then we will get into the consent agenda. It says our city council meeting minute in our May 6, 2024 meeting. As a Sandy Mountain Festival request for street closures and exclusive use of Meinig Park, exclusive use of Centennial Plaza. A funding request from the Sandy Historical Museum. And our ordinances, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2024-09 for the land use approval for the extension of our ordinance, which is our moratorium. Then under resolutions, we'll have a public hearing for resolution 2024-12 adopting findings to support the exemption for the formal invitation to bid process. Then we'll get into new business, which we have a funding request from the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce. As well as a conversation on our transportation system development charges. We'll then get into our report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. With that, let's go ahead and get into this work session. Tyler, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council and Planning Commission members. I'll keep my opening remarks really brief. We've been working on a comp plan update for over two years now, envision Sandy 2050. We're finally now at sort of the draft plan that's been provided in your packet this evening. And we have Anna East here, who you've seen many times before, to talk about all the different blocks of the comp plan. She'll walk us through what you have in front of you this evening and answer any questions you have. And with that, I'll turn it over to Anna East.
Excellent, thank you. On the screen. Thank you all again for having me. This is the seventh briefing that we've had in a work session format. So yes, as you mentioned, I have been here multiple times. It's been a long, long road, but I'm really happy with all the work that we've been doing over these last number of workshops. So what I hope to do tonight, you have a really large document in front of you. It is the culmination of a lot of work. I'm gonna just kind of tell the story a little bit to remind us kind of where we started and where we, where we've gone. And then I'll talk in detail about the actual document, sort of things that we've changed or added new things. And then some kind of considerations for all of you. And then really the key question at the end of this work session is whether you feel comfortable going into our first planning commission hearing, or if council would like another joint work session. So that's kind of the key consideration. So. You've seen this before, but this is our schedule. We are finally in the adoption phase. This is the first briefing or joint planning commission and city council work session to review the draft document before it moves into the hearings. There was a lot of work that went into this over the course of 2021 and 2022. We did a lot of really engaging outreach to the community. I think we touched over a thousand community members in Sandy through the envision 2050s community process. And really, a lot of that work was about developing this vision statement. And the vision statement are the founding principles of your new comprehensive plan. So that is really how we are able to weave community aspirations and priorities into this policy document. I just have some photos that are kind of fun to share, but we did a lot of really fun engagement with Sandy High School students through community conversations and focus groups. We also had Spanish language interpreters that were present at a number of Sandy community events throughout the summer, including Mountain Festival. We had intercept surveys in both English and Spanish. We had tables and booths set up at multiple Sunday or multiple longest day parkway events and the farmer's market. We were really everywhere and anywhere. We heard a lot from the community about what they really love about Sandy today, what, what makes this community special today, what they want to see here in the future. We also heard a lot about what we want to see change here in the community. We did our very best to capture those aspirations, concerns and priorities in this new vision statement. Really using the language and the vocabulary that was shared with us through all of this outreach and engagement. This work is really about building a language bank and understanding how people talk about what they love about their community. So that was really hopefully well reflected in the new vision statement. This is just a little shorthand of all that work, but basically we went through every single piece of feedback and basically coded every, every comment we got to a key theme. And that resulted in a new vision statement. So of course there are those six topic area or thematic areas as they relate to kind of those topic areas that are connected to land use through the comprehensive plan, but also reflected in the feedback that we got through our outreach process. And you were all very familiar with these. We worked through the block process in such that I came here and we walked through goals and policies for two of these thematic areas every time. So we kind of grouped them into chunks of two, so we could move the content a little bit more effectively, since there is a lot. You'll have remembered Future Fest, which was an absolute smash. We were at the Whippersnappers Play Area, free childcare, we got food and drinks going. It was a really awesome opportunity for folks to learn about your TSP, your economic development strategy, and start collecting some other big ideas for how we might move the needle in terms of achieving that vision statement. So this was a really fun event. It was super well attended and just such an awesome opportunity to draw in families and all sorts of different folks. Some more photos of our Future Fest event. Kudos to the city staff and also all of our elected officials too for being there and really representing that. That truly makes a difference. Just a snapshot of what did we actually capture at all these events? Here are some of those big ideas, and I think you'll see that a lot of those made their way into policy statements, which is pretty cool. In addition to that, we also had a series of stakeholder workshops where we brought together a variety of different voices that represented various agencies and groups and organizations and partners that work in or within the area of Sandy. And this was really focused on a piece of the comprehensive plan process that staff really wanted to elevate, which is wildfire resiliency and just general nat- resilience to natural hazards. So these workshops were kind of a deep dive into understanding what sort of climate conditions or natural conditions is Sandy, you know, most vulnerable to, and then what are some cross-sector strategies or solutions to addressing, you know, threats of wildfires specifically. And so those were really rich and led to some really interesting strategies that were supported by a really wide variety of partners and service providers in Sandy. And then, of course, we can't forget the role of our community advisory committee. They did so much work in putting the word out in this project, in engaging in community conversations, sending out the survey, and then also drafting the vision statement. So a lot of that work was the work of the CAC. They put those statements together. They identified those key themes. A lot of our meetings were more workshop style. So that was really fun and just such a great opportunity to connect with community members. If you recall, it was a volunteer kind of open-ended application, so anyone could apply for the CAC. And we had some really fun and great representation. All right. So in front of you and part of your packet, you have the new draft Sandy Comprehensive Plan. We think it's hopefully a bit of a leg up from the original comprehensive plan, though I have to say kudos on the Sandy FOT style from 1997. But we really built this out quite a bit. We have a lot more background information now than in the previous comprehensive plan. And obviously, it was also an engagement process. So this was really the work of a lot of voices. And the new Sandy Plan is organized differently. It's organized around key community priorities rather than statewide planning goals. We did obviously link every statewide planning goal to each of these thematic areas. So we are certainly still covering the applicable statewide planning goals. We also condensed it a little bit. Now we have six vision themes. I think we average about two to five goals for each of the themes. And then under each goal, we have four to 10 policies. We do also include some implementation strategies for some policies as needed. And those implementation strategies are the appendix to the document, which is that resiliency appendix or those those action items for furthering resiliency policies from the natural hazards chapter of the comp plan. And that was a direct output of those workshops. So your Sandy Comp Plan just graphically brings forward the branding and kind of look of our work so far. Our new logo, it's photo-rich and image-heavy. We have a lot of new elements, but I will also just emphasize at the same time, I would say about 90% of all of the content in this document, you've already seen or read in some form or fashion. It is essentially a culmination or compilation of all of these different deliverables and draft work products we've created up until this point. Just, it looks better. There, as I said, while 90% of it is stuff you've already reviewed, there are a couple of new items. So we did include a timeline, Sandy's mystery timeline. Staff was really instrumental in putting that together with some really nice images. We also included a land use gallery, so just describing what these different land uses are in Sandy, as well as some photos to to further describe those land uses. And then we also have an appendix that includes those implementation actions from, for the plans, natural hazards and resiliency strategies, I mean, say policies. But as I mentioned, that was the work of those stakeholder workshops. Many hands. In addition, you know, we did also, we drafted this document, and this was kind of in its more complete-ish form about three or four weeks ago. We shared a very preliminary draft with DLCD. We decided it would be prudent to just get this out in front of DLCD before we submit it for their Papa notice. We added a little bit more information about existing conditions and programs for the protection of streams, wetlands and habitats, et cetera, as part of the natural hazard section. That was one. We figured we were lacking a little bit of additional information. So that was a recent addition we added to that background section. We also called out the Urban Growth Management Agreement with Clackamas County, just added a little paragraph about that as well. So those are some just light changes we made to the draft.
Can you clarify a little bit about what program, for, for the protection of streams and wetlands and all that?
You know, we, yeah, it was in the natural hazards and resiliency chapter. And honestly, it was about just calling out the 1997 local wetlands inventory. And then there was also an additional paragraph that spoke about the sewer, the moratorium, and then being able to like, I forgot what page that was on. It's under, it's in the background narrative under natural hazards. Maybe the partisan trails, natural resources, that's what it was. Yeah, but it was, it was calling out what are kind of the regulatory regulatory pieces that the city uses to protect streams and habitats and wetlands, et cetera. So yeah, it's the local, local wetlands inventory, and then also talking a little bit about your infrastructure expansion. And yeah, the work that you've done there. Sorry, I'm not being very clear about that.
Is it the bottom of page 73? Or I can't remember.
I can pull that, let me pull that up once I just get through this, so we can look at that. Other changes that we made based on some DLCD feedback. We, Goal Five, statewide planning Goal Five, does require us to use inventories of culture, of cultural resources and natural resources. So we just included the word inventory as part of our policies. And I can share what policy that was, and that was relying on the inventory of historic and cultural resources. And that primarily speaks to the inventory that was used as the factual basis for the last comprehensive plan. I do not suspect it has necessarily been updated since, that's usually quite typical. But we did just include that word. We also referenced the Clackamas County's Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, which we sort of alluded to, but then we didn't actually call out as an important guiding document as well for Clackamas County. DLCD did suggest that we tie certain policies or reference the Development Code as part of certain policies. So we added that. It was primarily when speaking about development in sensitive natural areas and how that is regulated primarily through Development Code. So just adding that reference that that is regulated through the Development Code. We also, as I mentioned, referenced the 1997 local wetlands inventory. And then we also clarified the role of public involvement in land use review process procedures. None of the intent of the policies changed. I think there was maybe a couple of language tweaks to about four policies. So it's not very much, and it was mostly to just make sure that we are complying with those statewide planning goals. Sorry for the overlap test here. We did get some additional feedback from DLCD, so they had their Goal Five Natural Resources specialists review the document as well. And there are just some considerations that I'm offering to all of you tonight that we can talk through. But there was a suggestion, which I think is, makes sense, to add a bit more information to the timeline about when Sandy adopted their first comp plan, periodic review, and then also mentioning the 2017 UGB expansion, which we think would be very prudent to add to the timeline. There was a suggestion about maybe continuing the numbering of all the goals and policies throughout the entire document so that we can just reference one number and one number only. So we're happy to do that. Yes. And then these are just really minute details. Just a couple of, of, a couple of paragraphs, maybe at the beginning of the reference document appendix, just listing exactly what this reference list is about, just signature language there. A little bit more content about floods, landslides, earthquake hazards, et cetera, in the background section. This I could actually pull directly from the Clackamas County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, which basically details all of these natural hazards for Clackamas County, including Sandy. So just pulling in a little bit more information from that document into the background section. And then DLCD did offer some additional, to consider some additional policies for Goal Five compliance. And so there are three little bulleted policies at the bottom there. You know, Kelly and I, we kind of got this feedback a little bit late to really delve.
Wasn't it Thursday?
Yeah, to, to be able to have a conversation about this and, and kind of respond to any of it. So I will just say, no, we, we are not. We reviewed this, and I think Kelly may be able to speak better to this. Some of these are purely suggestions. There is maybe the sentiment that some of it is a little bit overkill. And we're happy to kind of, you know, weave our way between those two things. But I think generally speaking, we're, you know, we're agreed upon on most of these additional items. And then it's maybe just a question of whether or not we would like to add an additional policy or two about, A, archaeological sites, the National Register of Historic Places, so just recognizing an ORS, and then adopting a policy about the city's obligation to notify DSL about any development that would occur in an area with wetlands. And I know that Kelly and DLCD are just clarifying exactly what that means. So I think that's a TBD.
Yeah, what I would say is, so we just received these on like Thursday. Annie's was actually on vacation, so we actually didn't even really have an opportunity to talk about it. But she did update the slideshow this morning to prepare, to let you guys know that we did get these comments. I will say, a few of the things we got from DLCD, I would say, are a little bit potentially overfilled. However, I will say that they only have like four or five policies that they really wanted us to add or change. And none of them really concern me. So at the end of the day, I think if we did take a few of them, even the four or five, and put them into the comp plan, I think that's going to make the procedure go way smoother when we'd go for acknowledgement by the state organ, because they're going to see that we took some of their suggested input and we actually reflected it into the updated plan. So I, you know, like the bottom three, I don't have any heartburn over any of those. They seem pretty simple to me. So what I would suggest is, or what I'd recommend the council is if, if you agree with that strategy and that method of moving forward with the LCD, that we would incorporate some of these small policy changes that they wanted us to, just to make the adoption procedure go quicker and easier.
So, I agree. It's fine, whatever they need, but why that this statement, you know, that we will coordinate? We have so many policy statements in there that we will probably never get to. Why did, would this, is, is there a perceived weight that this policy statement will carry?
I don't, I don't, yeah, it's a good question. That's where I think it's kind of overkill. There's, there's a bunch of coordination that the city has to do.
Anyway, and there's the ORS is already there. If you don't do it, you're going to get in trouble.
Exactly. And it doesn't, there's tons of things we had to coordinate with, even like different utility providers and state agencies.
Are we going to list them all?
No, exactly. And that's why I told them, I did actually write back to the LCD saying, I think that we would be willing probably to adopt some of these into our plan. But I will say that they seem like overkill to me. I did tell the state that. Yeah, because like even like the, the Oregon Department of Human Services, we have to coordinate with them on childcare care operations, but we didn't make that policy within the comp plan. That'd be an example of, yeah.
Just, you worry that you start to weaken policies when you create so many that aren't enforceable. But there's only three.
I agree.
On top of our, yeah, yeah.
The little, whatever we already have. You know, the, the first two, I would say, are actually, I think, like better catches on their side because we probably should have had those policies. The third one just seems like, okay, yeah. I don't know.
The fourth one, I think, is important.
Presentations so that they feel like they've been heard. Doesn't really create a lot of headaches, so. You're not hearing a lot of opposition.
And the archaeological sites, I, a lot of you have been around Sandy a lot longer than me. The only one that I was aware of was the Barlow Trail that was identified in the 97 comp plan and then again in the Bornstead Village Master Plan work. I'm not aware of any other archaeological sites in Sandy, is what I told the city, or I told state. If we discover them, then sure, we would probably want to preserve those the best we could. But I, I don't know, Council Walker, I don't, you know. Yeah, exactly, but.
And there should be an established inventory.
That's the gap.
Yeah.
Though you should know.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a Barlow Road.
You should know.
I don't think there isn't. No, we, we do have the Barlow Road inventoried. I mean, there was a.
Yeah, was it G I, maybe a G I S layer or something like that?
I think it is.
That could be an inventory right there.
But besides that, I don't think there has been any other archaeological inventories done that I'm aware of. So I think that is the extent of it, my knowledge. But that's why I was wanting to bring it up, because I didn't know if anybody else was aware of something I was not.
So, yeah, those are the considerations.
I'm sorry, let me go back. Just the only thing I would say is that there's some old buildings in town that fall under the historical resource inventory.
Yeah, for sure. And, and that would fall under the second, isn't that the second bullet point?
Yeah, National Register of Historic Places.
So I would agree, yeah.
Yeah.
But the first bullet point, the archaeological sites, I was just, I didn't really know it much. There was, I'll just send you something. There was a root cellar that was identified on a property on Bornstead Road. And it was demoed and removed, and the county allowed it before it was annexed into the city. So that's the only other archaeological site I'm aware of.
So, yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, this, some of these revisions are fairly new to us, but we did get a chance to at least review some of them and would agree that they don't feel too onerous and that there would be probably, yeah, it would make sense to incorporate some of those language changes that they added here and there. And then, yeah, incorporate some of these additional revisions, like the first two bullets for sure, into a new and updated draft.
And then I think, just so you know, I think the, the, let me just make sure, is this, so it's at the bottom of page 99 in the packet or 93 in the comprehensive plan? When it talks about natural resources, this is the section that Annie said we added regarding the DEQ and EGA mandated improvements.
Thank you for stating that better than I did.
Yeah.
I didn't get to the appendix, but you have a, an action plan for the natural stuff. I, I haven't seen, I haven't had, I, I'm always nervous about action plans that haven't, you know, that we're obligated to do or something that we haven't, do we have funding for them and things like that to do?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, so the action plan is, yeah, basically further implementation strategies for those policies that rose up through the natural hazards section. They are, you know, they are owned by more than just city, the city. They could be a Clackamas County lead. There are various partners that are involved in leading those action items. And the purpose of those would be to be brought into departmental or agency work plans. The, the kind of formality of the action plan, I will say, is probably something that should be discussed with the city attorney at some point as to whether we want that adopted as part of an appendix or if we want that as a standalone. And at this point, I don't have any further information on what will be the better course of action. But there is, I mean, you know, it is not all, all, the, the action plan is not all on, on the city. There's kind of multiple agencies involved, given that multiple agencies collaborated on identifying these actions. I guess I, what I would say is I would not suspect that because it is an appendix to your document that the city is funding the entire action plan.
I, I would also say the other thing to keep in mind for the action plan is there's no deadlines.
Yeah.
Yep. There's no, so the priorities are, you know, that, that when it's listed in there, it talks about relative cost, but it actually doesn't talk about priority level or like scheduled completion date or anything like that. So I don't think there's actually much.
Not enforceable from another state agency or something like that.
Does the appendix, I wasn't clear, is the appendix part of what has to get approved and required by statute? Or is this just a bonus thing?
This is going above and beyond.
So I recommend that it, whatever we do with it, it's a separate document. You don't think there's any way that other agency would come in and say, you've established this agenda and so need to be incorporated by the end of 2050? Wouldn't see anything like that happening. Didn't happen in the previous one, for sure.
I mean, we, we would, as Annie said, we definitely want to double check all that with the attorney's office before we prepared an ordinance. But I, I can't believe that would be the case.
That's the point. Yeah, that's, that's one. Don't name something we don't need.
I'm just going to throw something out there. One of the actions on page 161 is to partner with Tree Care Services for low-cost and no-cost help to residents for tree health. And, and so that's our Public Works Department and our Development Services Department. So that, that's all on us. And, you know, I, I think our Public Works Department is already overloaded. Jenny, is she here? I don't know. But, you know, those are the kind of things where I'm kind of like, wait a minute, who, who, who said we should do that? Because not to say that's not a great thing, but let's, you know, can the Kiwanis be doing that or can the, you know, I mean, that's kind of my point is we seem to be obligating our public, you know, when we put it in writing, we don't have buy-in from everybody.
I will say they were, multiple of them were at the table writing those action items. So the Public Works Director was very involved in the stakeholders.
Not the director, but some of the other.
Right, yeah.
Did the director get it passed by that person?
I, I will, I will say that I, I think one way to look at this document is it was a collaborative process. I mean, it, it shows all the different agencies at the top there that were participating, all the people. So there, there, as Annie's pointed out, there was a lot of different people at the table that were not even related to the city whatsoever. So if you feel like there's concern related to potential obligations coming from this, or maybe not even obligations is the correct word, maybe expectations, then I'd be more than happy to take it out. I think it will still have, I think we should still keep it and still potentially refer to it in the future.
Can you do what Don was talking about, just putting it in a different document and refer to it? Like, I guess I'm with Kathleen and we started saying we're going to have a certain department do a certain thing, and then it's found out that that's better done by another entity than why tie our hands?
I, you know, and I could come up with some, you know, I mean, I, I guess I want to try, have the chance to kind of review all that stuff. And I hadn't, because I was like, oh, it's the appendix, I, you know, who reads the appendices?
It's 130, I quit.
It's 174 pages. It's a hundred and seventy-four pages. Yeah, so anyways, I I I will, um, I will read through all that stuff, and if there's a few edits and stuff like that where I'm, you know, I have some suggestions about how we can kind of word it so that it doesn't obligate us or
Make changes to, I'd like to see it as well.
Yeah, I would send it out to everybody. I would send it to just Tyler and have him, you know, here's my comments on that, you know.
It's just too big to adopt at once. I mean, it'd be like, you know, the Obamacare, with thousands of pages and nobody actually read it. So I I think if we can be, make it less complex, but just approving the comp plan first, then if wanna come back and there's a, if if there's something in resilience that we need to act on or do, then then I think it merits its own discussion and follow.
We can adopt the action plan second, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. And I would hate for this appendix to further delay the implementation of the comp plan since it's already been such a lengthy process, so we can confirm with, um, you know, Josh, the feasibility of adopting it as a standalone, just to make sure that doesn't have any other implications, but I think that's a very easy thing for us to take care of and and still continue to inform with the comp plan update.
Well, this goes forward to the DLC, um, is that appendix gonna be attached to it as well, or would that just be the comp plan itself?
You mean with the pop-up notice?
Yep.
Well, if you don't want the appendix to be adopted with the comp plan, we would not include that with our pop-up notice.
Simple, yeah, I won't say who, but stupid.
Okay, me. Keep it simple. Yeah.
Again, if you have any, if anybody has any feedback or comments on it, we'd love, we'd love to have that.
Are you, you act disappointed, like cutting it out is hurting a little bit?
Not at all.
Not at all, okay.
That's just all new stuff, and there was just so much on this agenda.
No, I get it.
Trying to get everything.
No, I think, no, I'm fine. I mean, it's a, it's, it's your decision. So I'm not disappointed at all. I I would say I would hope that we wouldn't lose track of the effort that was put into it from the county.
Yeah, I agree.
Which I think you'd all agree with, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and maybe there's an opportunity to make it enforceable in some other way. I mean, at the end, this is, I mean, you know, this is a a regulatory document, so, um, uh, yeah. It is, it is a lot of good work, so, yeah, tracking it in some other capacity.
And Tyler, if we map out our plan, let's just make sure that we plan, that we calendar it out to bring it back.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I sent him.
We saw a couple of slides.
Yeah, I don't know if you want, but I'm not gonna go over them all, but it's summary.
Uh, we're pretty much at the end. It was more just, um, yeah, does this document reflect your understanding of the priorities we uncovered in this process? Um, if the goals and policies accurately reflect your understanding of that factual basis and the trends from all these supporting reference documents, which are listed in the appendix, um, and then is the updated document with some of these revisions we just discussed, ready to go into a planning commission hearing or would you like another work session?
So just quickly, so if we if we separate the two documents, we'll separate the document. What ensures, one, that the two don't get separated to the point that you forget completely about the pieces that you separated out, right? Because now you have nothing. You just have the comp plan and everything else is separate. So you never refer to the two together? That would be my only concern with doing a complete separation.
I have a thought on that.
Oh, I'd love to hear it.
Which is if if there are goals or policy statements in the comp plan that are directly supported by this implementation plan, and there should be close alignment, then it's that goals, council goal-setting activity when we go, we go, that's a priority one, that's one I want to consider, then that implementation plan now becomes relevant. But right now, we've got well over a hundred policy statements, in which if we were to go on a goal session tomorrow, I'm pretty sure not all would be prioritized.
No, no, I understand that.
So I I think that link is between the the policy statement and the plan to hear that thing and the.
But that's also relying on city staff over the next twenty-five years to make sure that when that is brought before council, that that
and our webmaster's ability to keep those close so that they're discoverable.
I would just add on to that answer that our action plans are actually like our Parks and Trails master plan and our transportation, you know, we already have a lot of action plans in existence that kind of set priorities. You know, tier one, tier two, all that kind of stuff. And so this action plan, you know, it's a little confusing that we've got this secondary action plan, and how well does it tie with our action plans on our other master plans?
I would say it would be informed by those master plans.
Hopefully, yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, all the, all the right, I would say all the right voices were in the room to ensure that, um, but, yep. Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's not, and it's not a competing action plan, rather, I would see it more as a complimentary one. Um, it's not an action plan about park facilities. It's an action plan about programs primarily, I would say, a more programmatic element to address I don't, and you know, a wide variety of things, um, resiliency to wildfire, air quality, uh, lar-, you know, heating events, uh, large-scale heat events, large-scale cold events, um, that are more programmatic than land use, which is the comp plan is primarily land use. So that's another way to think about it.
I feel like the council feels a little rushed on the action plan. So so it just feels to me like we can move ahead with the comprehensive plan and the action plan is two separate things. And I don't see a reason why we can't link them back together if we all of a sudden, we just absolutely love the action plan, um, you know, you, we can, we amend these plans. There's no reason we can't attach it.
Action plan points in the comp plan, so that, I mean, that link should be there, right?
I think, I think we could likely adopt it similar to the TSP or the Parks Master Plan as
Good, right.
An add, an addendum to the comp plan as we did with those ordinance adoptions.
Right.
Um, I I, yeah, I think we can certainly do that. And we'll, we'll touch base with our attorney on how to properly do that, um.
That way, we're not abandoning it as a council or just taking it step by step in pieces.
Well, and I think the important thing when we do adopt it is that we're not obligating ourselves to any of these actions, but that they're adopted so that if we go for grant funding or anything else, then we can make the link.
I would expect a lot of these are great ideas. Some of these may be a little more specific than want to be, but we don't certainly wanna lose them, so.
And you may also then, you know, make an amendment in the comp, if if you were to adopt the action plan separately, then you could add the adoption plan to your reference documents and reference it directly in the comp plan during amendment. Um, I I don't think the action plan can 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 lie in the appendix, or sorry, in the reference appendix until it is adopted per se. Uh, so that, yeah, that could certainly be just separated.
That's what, that's what the LCD said, yeah. Yeah, we did confirm that.
So Mayor, you're thinking about maybe one more workshop before we're finished with the action plan? Cuz I've got some things I'd like to.
For the action plan, yeah.
Yeah. It sounds like some other folks have ready to or already have submitted some stuff, so. Yeah, okay, that works for me.
Not the comp plan. The comp plan, I think we're ready to move ahead.
I I had a, I sent on a long, longer list of mostly minor uh, things, but I just wanted to summarize a couple of concerns, uh, in the and it really, first of all, the the policies and the things that were reviewed in here, it really had minor or no comments related to. So the comments are really around the boilerplate and the the text that kind of describes things leading up to the policy sec- sections and the there, some of them have to do with, there are a lot of pictures in there. Quite often, it's the wrong picture for what we're talking about. So you'll have a story of Sandy Style, we're talking about Sandy Style, and underneath it is a picture of Joe's. Well, that doesn't fit without an explanation of the exceptions that we also have in Sandy Style, so that, that's one of them. We also have, and talking about, you know, the future of the people, we have a picture of the Sandy Gunslinger next to Joe's in our comp plan.
Top end.
I don't think we should have somebody with a strong political agenda featured in our comp plan. Um, just a thought there, that that might not be the appropriate picture.
He has a name, though.
Pardon?
He has a name.
He probably does, and I don't know.
His name is Dennis.
Yeah. I only met him the other day, and I'll just tell you, it was very unpleasant. Um, we can talk about that later. My point was because a- anyway, it doesn't matter. Good, appropriate pictures that add to the dialogue is the that to the conversation is one of the people. Um, second part is, um, as we get into the, um, statistics, there's a section where a whole lot of numbers are quoted in there, and the footnotes are like two pages later, and they're not referenced back to any single number. So I mean, if we're gonna quote a stat and it's from somewhere, I'd like to know where so that you can source it and know exactly what we're talking about. And there's a number of others where, um, the statistics are just not clear. There's, especially when we get into the housing area, you know, it's quoting and comparing, it's not clear what we're comparing or how this number matches to that number. Needs to get really thought out. In fact, my level of unhappiness with the housing area is very, very high. Um, there are numerous statements that I would say are judgmental in the way that presented. So if if I'm wearing brown and the mayor's wearing black, that's what, I'm wearing brown and he's wearing black. But if I say, well, I'm wearing brown, but he's wearing black, I would, I put an implication of the, that, and that is riddled throughout this text where there's this this perception of some desired goal that's not articulated, not justified, and not explained that doesn't go there. So we're presenting facts, just present facts. If we're going to draw some conclusions, please present that case to suggest why we need more housing or not.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to push back on that a little bit. I I I think what you're talking about with pictures and stuff, that's very subjective for one. And I think, so unless you can point out specific pictures within the comp plan.
I did, he did.
You pointed out two, but let me, let me finish my statement. So the one on Joe's donuts, not even in the Sandy Style section, that is in the C one, uh, land use gallery section.
The second time Joe's, third time Joe's shows up.
Okay, well, we can remove a few of those, but it's very subjective to say that some of the pictures don't work. So I think we would need more clear direction from the council on what pictures don't work. And then the second thing about the statements and how it's worded, I don't really understand where you're going with that.
Did you see my write-up?
No, I I didn't get anything.
Okay, so that, so number one, I did identify specific pictures and by page number, so you'll have that in in the write-up by the same title. And then secondly, for these phrases I'm talking about, I'm offering the general commentary, but I actually offered specific instances by page number for where I saw that as a problem. So take a look at it, see what you think, and if you find the way out, then just let me know, but.
I will say that the, um, narrative that was in that economy and housing background section was all text that came from recently adopted HCA and BOA. Um, so all of that language is actually the executive summary of your HCA.
And probably some protective.
Okay.
All right. Other comments before moving forward? All right. Well, I think we've got a plan to move ahead with the comp plan and the action plan. Um, thank you for all the work.
Separately, right?
Separately. And I, that's right. Um, thank you for all the work that went into it. Um, to Counselor Hokinson's point, you know, um, I would certainly hope that we didn't spend a lot of staff time looking at the pictures, so making sure it's all pretty, right? We wanted to really dial down on the policy. But maybe now that's, now that we've got a lot of this document behind us, that this would be an opportunity for one glance, one more glance over to make sure that some of those cosmetic and marketing pieces, you know, make a little bit more sense throughout the document. I think that's really just the point on that. Uh, but other than that, I just, I think it's, it's great. Thank you for all the work over the year and a half, two years that we've been putting into this and, um, into all the community members. Uh, thank you to our planning commission members for, uh, participating in all these meetings with us and your engagement, and and then we look forward to seeing what comes back at us, um, out of your badges meetings on this, so. With that, I will, uh, close our work session, and we will convene our city council meeting at seven PM. Everybody. In car, Sandy City Council, any that work, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to our city council meeting, everyone. And per usual, I'll start with a review of tonight's agenda. I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Uh, we'll then get into public comment. Uh, do we have anyone who's issued for public comment tonight?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Okay, uh, if you are here and you are planning on testifying, though, we do have two, um, public hearings in front of us, and I will be discussing that here in a moment. Um, after the opportunity for public comment, we then move to the consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from our May sixth meeting. Twenty twenty-four Mountain Festival request for street closures, exclusive use of Meinig Park, as well as exclusive use of Centennial Plaza. Uh, yeah, that looks good. Uh, funding request, uh, for the Sandy Historical Museum as well. Under ordinances, we have a public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine for a land use approval for the extension of our moratorium. Uh, there will be an opportunity for public comment during that portion on that item. Then we'll get to resolutions, uh, for a public hearing on resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, which is adopting the findings uh, to support the exemption for the, uh, from formal invitation to bid process. Under new business, we have a funding request to discuss from the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce, as well as a transportation system development charge discussion. We'll then round off our evening with a report from our city manager, as well as our committee council reports. And then a reminder to our city council that we do have a, um, a urban renewal board meeting at the conclusion of this meeting, correct? Yes. Uh, with that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Maitland.
Present.
Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exter.
Here.
Counselor Hokum.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Present. Uh, with that, uh, we'll move ahead, uh, to the consent agenda. Uh, after our city council meeting minutes from our May sixth meeting, twenty twenty-four Mountain Festival request for street closures. Uh, well, actually, I should call, is there any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, and if there's no public comment, we're moving to our consent agenda. Also, that twenty twenty-four Mountain Festival request for street closures, exclusive use of Meinig Park, and the exclusive use of Centennial Plaza, as well as a funding request for the Sandy Historical Museum. Unless there's discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Sir, a second.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Walker to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suppose nades. Motion carries. With that, we will now move into ordinances where I will open the public hearing uh, for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh nine at seven oh three PM. Are there any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest from the hearing body? I'll now call for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Kelly's pulling that up and making sure that the, uh, presentation he has prepared is ready to go. Um, I'll just briefly give you a recap here. So obviously, council's aware of our, uh, existing moratorium. And that's had some uh, impact on the ability for certain landowners to move forward with their development projects, either for financing-related issues or capacity-related issues or other, um, you know, internal issues related to those projects. And so what we have before you tonight is, um, an extension ordinance to increase um, uh, the amount of time available for some of these projects to move forward, um. And there's a real high-level update or or recap for you. Kelly, I think you're ready to go now. Yeah, so I think that that is a great summary that Tyler provided you, um. So this has three points for the reason for the ordinance, um. I believe Tyler pretty much just covered this, but it's, it's mainly because of the Santory Sewer Moratorium and Consent decree. Um, and then just wanting to find a just and equitable extension process for these land use approvals that have already gotten approval. And then the only other thing I would add is that one recent development is we went up from three hundred ERUs to five hundred and seventy uh, per negotiations with the EPA and DEQ. Uh, there'll be a resolution for a, uh, modified moratorium coming before you on June third. Uh, but in the meantime, we decide to bring this ordinance before you, as we've been getting requests from a few of these developers for I'd say at least a half year at this point. What is not part of this ordinance, um, extension for any land use application submitted since October third, two thousand twenty-two. So with the exception, I believe, of one or, so there's only been, I believe, one or two applications submitted since that date that had sewer connections, and they were for sites are with, with existing sewer connections. So it's just like converting, like knocking down a house and putting in a new house in the. Knocking down a house and putting in a new house in the same location with the same sewer connection. So this would not be applicable to those uh applications or any other applications we've received since the initial moratorium in October of two thousand twenty two. And this ordinance also creates a review process, a type one review. Uh, so it does not include an automatic approval, so there would still be a review process that we'd go through, including an application of the. And and so forth. I just wanted to go through this really quickly, just to make sure everybody that is listening tonight knows that we did all of the noticing requirements. We noticed the state of Oregon on March sixth. We put a legal notice in the Sandy Post on April tenth. We also put Facebook notifications about planning commission meeting and the city council meeting tonight, which is in our municipal code to put it on social media. And we actually went above and beyond our noticing requirements and sent a notice to all the developers that this could potentially affect on April fourth. And that's how we got a few public comments. So we got public comments from the owner of Next Adventure. We got uh who supports the ordinance, we got comments from Margot Clinton on behalf of Sandy Woods Two um and Rosemont Homes. Who also supports the ordinance. And we also got comments from um. The attorney of Bull Run Terrace, who supports the ordinance, but has requested some modifications to the ordinance language. And request two years extension instead of just one. Uh, I believe there's two letters in the record um from Garrett.
Can you, who who does, which development is the SGS?
Uh, that's Sandy Woods Two. So Margot Clinton is their land use planner.
Okay.
For SGS, it's somebody that they hired to help through the land use process.
Yeah, they didn't mention what happened once.
Oh, yeah, that would be Sandy Woods Two. So the planning commission did um review this ordinance in April at their April twenty second public hearing that they held. They liked the idea of the ordinance and recommended approval of it. During that hearing, uh, there was a few public comments basically around. Section two uh the alternative ordinance, which has also been presented for your um consideration tonight. So the comments were basically around extending from one year in the ordinance to two years. So at the planning commission meeting, when that was brought up by a few people that were speaking. The planning commission asked staff for some different ideas on how we can accomplish that to accommodate that request. Staff came up with some ideas and that's what was forwarded to you tonight in the alternative ordinance. So just to be clear, staff's recommendation at this time is to either adopt. The ordinance, which is presented in the packet, or to adopt the alternative ordinance as proposed by the planning commission. And that concludes my uh summary of the staff report.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Kelly. This is now the opportunity for public testimony. I will now read some guidelines for those of you who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of the previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps or letter that you wish to have considered by the body, they must uh formally be placed in the reporting. Into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. And our staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer a public testimony. For those of you joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand that you'd like to speak at the right time. If you participate online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you, if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll then call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules do require that each person state your name and address for the record. I'll now call on any testimony uh for the proposed ordinance. Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening, mayor and councillors. My name is Garrett Stevenson. My address is one two one one Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two. Oh, four. Um, I'm here tonight representing Roll Tide, um, who, as you may recall, is the applicant and. Owner of the Bull Run Terrace uh project. And I wanted to provide just some color on my comments, which are pretty brief, but you've seen both the letter we sent to planning commission. As well as one uh tailored for the council, but both of them basically address the same thing. And before jumping into it, I want to thank um staff, particularly Kelly, as well as your uh city attorney. We've actually been working um on something like this for quite a while now. As Kelly mentioned, at least for six months, I know that we were having some fairly detailed discussions back in January about this. But um what we needed to do, and I think what staff and the planning commission have done a good job of accommodating. Is we need to deal with the dynamic where if you have an application that's been approved for housing development. Typically, the next thing you do is you go to your lender and you say, I need a construction loan. The problem is, is that in order to do that, the lender will do their due diligence and find out, well, the city you want to do that project in has a moratorium on development. And in in our case, and I think this is the same with, you know, a few similarly situated projects, that moratorium. It was written in such a way that you do not have assurance of getting an E R U, which is essentially. Uh, sewer hookup for one unit until you go in for building permit. So there's an order of operations problem. The lenders want to see that you can actually get the project permitted. And you can get it connected to the city system, but in order to do that, the way that um the uh, the way that D E Q. Um, basically created this enforcement mechanism is you cannot get those ERUs until you're there. With your building permits and they issue at that time. And what I understand from my client, I don't work directly with the lenders, but I do um. Uh, you know, I do get the feedback from my client on this issue. What I understand is that what they really need in order to proceed forward to issue a construction loan is that assurance. And what we've always asked for city staff that uh until now, I think they've been unable to do is basically a letter saying. We now have this many ERUs available and your project can use up to this many. And that is what you're going to see next month uh in your revised moratorium. And that mechanism, I have to tell you, is so important. What we're trying to do, though, is deal with the interim. And the interim is problematic because unfortunately, when my client came in and got his and did his initial application. The code allowed a period of only one year to get your project done, to go through final plat. That has since been revised to two years. Um, and so what we're looking at now is we've gone through that initial one-year period. We've got our one extension that is done. Um, by right. Uh, and this would add yet another year, but we've lost at least at this point two years in waiting. For our construction loan to come through because we couldn't qualify for it, given the moratorium. And so that's why we're so supportive of this extension proposal. This will get at least my client all the way to. I think roughly the end of two thousand twenty five. We are asking, though, that it be a two-year extension. That reason is really twofold. Number one. As it is sets now, he would have to find a way to make sure that project have, is completely constructed as far as site improvements go. Next year.
Twenty seconds.
Yeah, sorry. And. We believe that that is an awfully tight timeline, given the delay that's already been created. The second reason is, as I described in my letter, if he had come in slightly later, when the code allowed a two-year initial period. This two-year extension, as opposed to the one year, would give him about the same amount of time, minus the time that he's already been delayed. Because of the moratorium. So that's really what we're asking for. We certainly want uh some sort of extension to be approved. We really do recommend. In this case, the planning commission had the right idea, give it, give us the uh ability to do a two-year extension. The planning commission recommended some criteria and Dave Vanden, my client contact, believes we can meet those. So that's what we'd request at this time. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
Um, this is just for the um, what was it, five, five lots, um, the, the single family or medium density lots, right?
Well, the ER, so the project would apply. Project includes, I, if I recall correctly. It includes multifamily and a mixed-use element and then um, single family.
Because my understanding, when we approved Bull Run, was that for the multifamily stuff, that all had to come in under a new. That we, that that the, the zoning change was what we approved, not the. We don't have any plans or anything showing where the apartment buildings are or anything like that. We, we just have lots for the single family stuff.
So there's a subdivision that was approved, and that is what requires the site improvements to be done within a certain period of time.
That's the stuff that's closest kind of south of the park and to.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, there's five.
We're talking about not just the lots, but also the streets that go in to serve those lots. And so to finalize the subdivision, to get that final platted, the way the code works is that we have to do our site improvements. Before we can get that plat recorded and the deadlines, the way they're set up in Sandy's code at the time that uh Roll Tide applied. Was that you had to have those site improvements done and the thing final platted within one year.
Right, but but I mean, I, I think what I've heard is like eight duplex units or something is what we're talking about.
I I I don't, I don't recall the specifics of the project. What I'm trying to say is that um. We need this additional time if we're going to be able to build out the site improvements that are required in order to get to final plat.
I can address some of that when I do my recap.
Great, that would be great.
Thanks. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Call a testimony from anyone else who would like to speak. Let's check online as well. If you're online, please use the raised hand button or telephone dial star nine. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands on the. All right, thank you. Um, with that, I will call for the staff recap recommendation.
Sure, I, I would uh be happy to explain the Bull Run Terrace approval uh a little bit more. Before I do that, though, I would like to pass out this other document that we're entering into the record that I. Can I get one of those? So as you'll see in this document, this, this basically entails all of the. Land use approvals that this would be applying to. It's, it's mainly these seven. Um, there could be a few other really small design reviews. That don't have E R U allocations, or there could be things like property line adjustments and stuff like that. But the, these are the actual projects up for consideration with this in, with this ordinance tonight that had ERUs that would be allocated to them. So I just wanted to let you all know, this is what you're really. That would be part of this ordinance, and these would be the seven projects seeking extensions. Potentially, um, I think actually probably. Five of these projects would actually seek extensions if, try to take a guess. Um, so the first three up at the top are the three subdivisions that have not been bladed so far, uh, that have land use approval. Uh, the first one is the one that um, Mr. Stevenson was just talking to. The, the current expiration date is December fifth of two thousand twenty four. So a one-year extension would bring that out to December fifth, twenty twenty five. If the ordinance is adopted with a two-year extension, it would go to twenty six and so on. Uh. A few of these, most, five of these have no more extensions that could be allowed under the development code. Two of them uh down in the design review section were approved recently enough that they actually haven't applied for their extension yet. So they actually could apply for one, one more year extension for Barlow Trail Battery Clinic and State Street Homes. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Um, this is mainly the five that we'd be looking at. There are a few developments out there, such as the Tickle Creek Condos project off of Debarco Road in Rubin. Or uh, sorry, I'm trying to remember some of the names, or Cascade Creek Apartments by Hornsip Park. Those applications don't have to come back for an extension at this point because they've already had building permits either issued. Or they're in the process of the building permits being reviewed and issued, which per the development code for design reviews. Those no longer fall under the development code extension process. And then on, on the other side is we do have a few subdivisions where that they were just recently platted. Um, a couple come into mind. Up off of this, the loop, there's Hoodview Heights Phase One on the west side and Hoodview Heights Phase Two on the east side. Those subdivisions have both been recorded, the plat's been recorded at Clackamas County. So they do not have to seek land use extensions anymore either.
Is that the Cedar Creek Heights?
Yeah.
Projects?
It's had like four names, so.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's also called Timber Grove. It was also once called the Views. So, yeah, that's all the same project.
Kelly, what's that status of Next, Next Adventure, where their expiration is already come and gone?
Yeah, so that's an interesting one. Um, that's the one where DK Camp, the owner of Next Adventure, wrote in a letter. He, he got his approval in May of two thousand twenty one. I, you know, from what he's told me at least, he just has not been able to move forward with the project due to uncertainty. Around how much additional business they will do. He says that they're doing a lot of business at their current location, but he's a little bit nervous investing millions of dollars into a new building with the unknowns, uh, especially related to skiing.
So does, I just, since that date is already gone, does that mean it's no longer? What does that mean? They have to reapply?
I mean, I, I, I have taken it, I have interpreted it to be that if you do pass this ordinance, that they could apply for an extension still.
Okay, that, that's where I kind of get.
And that would be, that would be my hope, that we would want to grant them an extensions.
Okay.
I think it's been a very successful business and Mr. Haycamp's been, I think, a really good local business owner.
So then if we do two years, it's two years for everyone. We're not going line item, or are we able to line item that?
So it would be, it would be one year for everybody that could apply for it. And then if they got, if they met the minimum qualifications for like the bank loans, so they could get a second year added on that.
Is that based on the?
The alternative.
That was the alternative.
So and then to answer Counselor Walker's question on Bull Run Terrace. Yeah, they got approval for um eight, four duplexes, so eight units, a hundred and ninety apartments. And then they have to build some commercial with the apartment complexes. The approval that they received is for zone change. I believe a comprehensive plan map change. Uh, because they had to dedicate some parkland, I believe. And then they also got approval for the density of a hundred and ninety-eight dwelling units. With the, with the makeup of, for them being duplexes and a hundred and ninety being apartments. So that, that's what the, that's what the approval is for right now. Now, in order to move forward with the apartments. Once they plat the subdivision, as Garrett was speaking to, once the streets are put in, the utilities and the plat records. Then they would have to do a design review request so we can. Review what they look like and how they're situated on the properties.
But they still get the extension. Once it's platted, it wouldn't matter.
Once it's platted, then they're under a different timeline under designer view.
Okay, well.
Yeah. The plat.
Having been involved in all the different iterations of this development, and I'm not. I'm not, you know, reluctant to give them an extension at all. You know, that's, that's important for them to be able to get the stuff done, but I was under the impression that they had the ability. You know, what I would recall being told was that they were, they had the approval for the duplexes. And they had conception, just comp plan zone changes for the rest of it and the ability to get a total of two hundred units. That was in there um with some, you know, parkland dedication and the road stuff. But that the proposed apartment buildings and and what was commercial, where it was, what it looked like. I mean, there's, it's like fifteen acres of stuff, and what I'm hearing you say is that gets done without any kind of. Approval or review.
No, that goes through a designer view.
Designer view.
Yep.
Um.
So that would still come later. Yeah.
I mean, is that a public process or is that just you?
It will depend if they can meet the code or not. So if they meet the code, then it goes through a type two process where we send out notice. And if they want variances or adjustments to the code, then it will go to planning commission. Just like all designer views.
What's your issue there? I'm trying to figure out why it would make any indifference.
Um, my issue is that this is the first I'm hearing that, you know, the, the neighbors in that area have a real concern about what happens. It's fifteen acres, and so all it was, was a colored purple. And that's all they were able to see about the details of what would happen on that site. And that was their one and only time to find out what this meant. And so what I'm hearing is that they don't get any more input.
No, that, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Okay, well, design review, you said doesn't have public hearings and all that.
I said. I, I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I said, if, if they can meet the code, if they can meet the municipal code, just like any other designer view that we ever process. They go through a type two review process, which. My office sends out notice to everybody within three hundred feet. So all those, most of those people, and dear point, will all get noticed, and then they have an opportunity to comment. So all those, most of those people, and dear point, will all get noticed, and then they have an opportunity to comment. And then they have an opportunity to appeal the decision that my department issues. So no, it is still a very public process. If they decide that they don't, or if they choose, basically if they choose that not to meet the code and they want to seek variances or adjustments. Then I automatically elevate it to a type-three or D and B for the planning.
And I guess where where I'm coming from and why it matters, the good question there, Carl, is that what I, I mean, it sounds like they're. Eventually be ready to go on the duplexes because that all got approved and they seem to have all that stuff. But all this stuff that needs to happen with where the commercial is, where the part, you know, all that stuff, it's going to take a while. And so giving them some extension now. So so that's kind of where I'm, like, if there's still a design review to go, do you give them an extension for that before the design review even happens? That's what I'm confused about.
So there, so I guess, I think I know what you're asking. So basically, you're asking what's there, once they plat the subdivision. What's going to be their motivation to move quickly? So one would probably be the lenders will want them to move quickly, but. When we bring the moratorium resolution before you at the next meeting. There's going to be an ERU allocation process. And the most, so they'll get a one year of ERUs, and then they can submit two extensions as well as our attorneys proposing. So that would lock them into a three-year. At allocation deadline. So. That that would hold, I guess, for a lack of a better term, that would hold the developer's feet to the fire as moving forward. Is that there, that ERU allocation process does have a deadline.
Other discussion questions?
Yeah, Chris, just just for the record here. If the original modification passes, it's a one-year extension. Will the will the developer have an opportunity to extend that again? If if it's extended to one year.
So if you adopt the ordinance with one year written in it, how it's currently written is no.
So it's one year and that's it.
That's correct.
Unless you've decided to amend the resolution or issue a new new resolution.
They could come back to council.
So so the two, the two-year extension. Gives them that extra time, and I guess from my standpoint, the fear, which I think you just answered, the fear is. Them not building fast enough and it locking up that land vacant for two years. But to your previous statement, the lender is going to be forcing them to construct and build, right?
And not and not only that, but. Garrett's client, Dave, will be out millions of dollars in putting in utilities and roads. He's already purchased the land and dedicated a bunch of fur clan to us. So he's already, he's already out that money. And once he builds the roads and the utilities and does whatever other improvements, paying his engineers, paying his attorney. He's going to want to capitalize and get that money back. So that that's pressure alone, I think, even if he didn't have the lenders. Or our ERU allocation program.
And all my ears on the planning commission, I knew that, I just wanted to hear you say.
Was there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
There's a motion by Council Hockenson, a second by Council Smallwood to post public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, motion carries. All right, we're at the discussion part. You guys can talk and talk and talk, or you can make a motion on the alternative version. From the planning commission to your approval exception.
I'll make a motion.
I thought you were ready.
No, no, no. Open it here. I'm going to read the quote here. I move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero nine, including the section two language from the alternative ordinance.
All right, is there a second?
Mayor Shuck performing.
Sorry, I can just call for the reading.
Yeah, let's just go with that.
Read it. Okay, mayor, this is the alternative version of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero nine. And ordinance allowing extensions for land use approvals that could expire during the city's development moratoria.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the first reading? To approve the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion by Counselor Smallwood and a second by Counselor Exner to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh nine, the alternative. And is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nays. Motion carries. So I'll now call for the second reading.
This is the alternative version of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero nine. An ordinance allowing extensions for land use approvals that could expire during the city's development moratoria.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'm in motion to approve the second reading.
Second. Is there a second?
Sure.
Now, a motion by Council. A second by Counselor Hockenson for the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh nine, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. Awesome. Yeah, everybody, thank you, staff, thank you, Kelly, and you want to work on that? All right. Moving ahead to resolutions. And I open a public hearing on resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve at seven thirty-one. Are there any extensions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest from the hearing body? Jenny, can you please give us the staff report?
Thank you, mayor. The decision to be made tonight is whether to approve resolution twenty twenty four twelve. Which would allow the council, acting as the local contractor review board, to exempt certain contracts from the contracts. From the formal invitation to bid process based upon findings of benefit to the city. Uh, to give some background, Oregon law requires contracting agencies to award contracts for public improvements. Via an invitation to bid to the lowest responsible responsive bidder. In certain circumstances, however, agencies may exempt a contract or class of contracts from this process. When the local contract review board finds that A, the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism. Or substantially diminish competition and B. Awarding the public improvement contracts under the exemption would likely result in substantial cost savings. And other substantial benefits to the contracting agency. If approved tonight, staff intends to utilize this exemption to secure a roster of three pre-qualified contractor, general contractors. Um, for master services on-call construction contracts. That may be used towards the drinking water and the wastewater capital improvements project in a sum not to exceed five million dollars. Per construction contract over a duration of five years. Um, to give some more background, we face a large number of. Relatively small dollar value projects in order to address assets, increase capacity. And deal with risks or of projects or instances we don't even know of. We're also facing a saturated construction market with billions of dollars of infrastructure around us. And certain agencies, even in Clackamas County, are starting to see zero bids for construction work. All of these would substantially delay progress of our Sandy Clean Water and Sandy Drinking Water. Reinvestment programs. Um, so given this volume of work, we see this as a nimble approach to the market. By bundling a number of these smaller dollar values together and seeking qualified contractors. We think that our work will be more attractive. And by securing the master services contract, we maintain competition. Once on that pre-qualified list, each project will go to all the contractors. And we'll be seeking bids and keeping competition alive that way. Um, in terms of other analysis, this is consistent with an approach council took in December twenty twenty three for engineering contracts. Um, addressing the same challenges, this is the companion resolution for construction contracts. Um, I already explained about the construction contract market. I think this will make us more attractive, especially bundling these into into one RFP. Um, it allows us to maintain an expedited schedule, especially with the ARPA grant for our wastewater projects. Those have to be under construction contract by the end of this year. And so. This will facilitate achieving that aim. It allows us, um. If we do have an accident or a breakage, we already have a contract with pre-qualified contractor to do a repair. And it also maximizes our grant funds. In terms of the budget impacts. These projects are already included in our CIP as well as our budget. For wastewater, we intend to use the ARPA grant. We've also included some additional dollars in case. Other things arise over the duration of five years, and for the drinking water, we plan to use our business Oregon loans. And the other point to make is the city is not obligated to spend these funds. We did discuss this resolution at our council oversight committee, and per their direction, we have put in. Slightly more dollars, just to give us some additional flexibility. We also have the flexibility to extend this over five years, although we anticipate most of this construction will occur in the next two to three years. And to summarize, staff recommends adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. I will now read guidelines for those who wish to speak. Now, please try to avoid repetition if someone's already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at ci.cmv.or.us. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. To offer public customer. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you'd like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll now call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. The city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our council rules require that each person state your name and address for the record. And now calling on testimony for the proposed resolution. All right, Jeff, please check online.
I'm checking online, mayor. And I do not see any raised hands.
All right, thank you. Well, with that, I will now call for you, Jenny, to give the staff recap and recommendation.
Thank you, mayor. As stated previously, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All a motion by Counselor Sheldon, a second by Counselor Exner, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays, motion carries, we're closing at seven thirty-eight. Uh, discussion or a motion to move ahead?
I have a couple of questions. Um, so just two things, I just want to make sure, are you seeing that you're going to take. Multiple small projects and bundle them into one project that's going to be bid on? Or are you taking a group of contractors? That agree to do the work for you in a sense. I'm just not really clear with that.
No, it's a good question. Um, the projects will come out at different times, so we will issue an RFP. Um, to secure the three qualified contractors. As the projects arise, each one will go to all three for bids. And we'll select the lowest bid. So. The each con, each contractor that's selected will have a maximum dollar value of up to five million dollars. Cumulative of individual projects. Over five years. We're going to tilt it more in favor of wastewater because we we know more of those projects.
And how do we guarantee that we're getting the best quality for a dollar?
Well, um. First of all, there are going to be qualifications based, so they bid on the RFP, which is exactly what we want. This is very complicated work, and one of the things I'm worried about is. Not particularly qualified contractors bidding on our work and getting in trouble or not delivering. So it it would be through the qualifications-based selection in the RFP to set up the initial.
That's the key, the RFP is qualifications-based and price-based or just qualifications?
Just qualifications-based because they're not bidding on any work yet. We're requalifying each one. Then as, so we have a UV project, that's our largest one, I think about three million in construction. Most of the others are much smaller dollar value. We'll go to each contractor and ask for an individual bid. And we'll select that way to maintain competitive price.
Okay. Motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Walker. I to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Jenny.
All right, moving ahead in new business funding requests by the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce. Oh, David?
Uh, good evening, council. So this is the same funding issue that's come before you several times now. We've had several discussions with the chamber with regard to this item, and they've heard the feedback from those discussions and adjusted their request based on that framework. So with this chamber request, the Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce proposes to pursue their travel twenty-six tourism promotion program for the region. This program aspires to ultimately create a DMO or a destination marketing organization for the US twenty-six corridor. To promote activities that bring people in from outside the region. Um, for definitional purposes, a DMO, a destination marketing organization, is a nonprofit that promotes a specific destination such as a city, county, or region. To attract visitors and boost tourism. Adding a DMO to this area, I think, would be extremely beneficial because. These organizations stimulate the tourism economy and can provide regular funding for promotional activities that could get people up here. And when we boost tourism here in our region, whether it's in Sandy or up in the villages, it benefits everybody. Um, and just just to add briefly to the information in the staff report about the proposed program. Uh, first year program activities will include a lot of convening work to put together a really good tourism promotion board. With representatives from businesses and organizations throughout the quarter to help drive the program. Uh, activities in the first year also include the development and launch of a dedicated travel twenty-six website. Uh, brand development and introduction and potentially an introductory ad campaign to promote the region's tourist nests. Uh, beyond year one, program's focus would shift to, uh. Primarily promotional advertising, starting with brand promotion and then moving on to promotion of general tourism assets in the area. Developing stronger relationships with asset managers as promotional partners. Uh, development of new promotional activities for the region. Assisting with the promotion of, but not operations of. Existing tourism-facing events like Mountain Festival, Music Fair in Feist and Winterfest outside of our local area. And working with existing tourism partners like Travel Oregon, Mounted Territory and Mounted Gorge. To open new advertising channels and improve the, and I'm sorry, uh, new advertising channels and to improve and expand existing ones. It's also mentioned in the staff report that, um. The chamber recently got a five-thousand-dollar grant from Lizzie Keenan over at Mounted Gorge to supplement the convening work needed for this program. Lizzie's done a little bit of the pre-convening work already in previous years. And there's a lot of work there that needs to be done. I also, I believe, Ms. Keenan also plans to assist with the development of this program. And finally, the funding outline here is intended for the twenty-three to twenty-five biennium. Additional discussions will be needed in the future to secure this funding beyond that. And that's all right.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions by council?
Yeah, I got some questions. So if if I remember and I'm going through the notes correctly, when we met in the work session. This was a financial ask because we have one point five FTEs. To to fund some projects with. The chamber and then keep basically help fund the Business Recovery Center, correct?
Uh, we've moved on from the Business Recovery Center since the the discussions that we had about that. Uh, that's why we've moved on to the travel twenty-six tourism.
So what happens to the Business Recovery Center?
Madam Executive Director?
We are still looking at keeping it. There's there is pieces of that that we will not give up. There's, you know, that are beneficial. Um, we won't be able to offer it to non-members. So it won't be every business anymore, but it will be, but the pieces that are really important, we will move with us and we will find a way to cover.
But you don't currently have a way to.
But currently, no, we don't.
Okay. So then my next question is, by pivoting into tourism. We have one point five FTEs. And even with the twenty-eight thousand dollar biennial mask. How, I mean, advertising costs are. Insanely expensive right now, so. How does that money, how do we guarantee that that money, one, can do what we want it to do? Because it doesn't seem like a very day ask to me for for all of the things that we think we're going to do with that fourteen thousand a year, one. And then two, I have some concerns about what happens to the chamber. If we ask one point five FTEs to pivot into tourism.
Was the chamber our responsibility as a council? I didn't know that we were in the business of. Of funding the Chamber of Commerce.
No, that's not what I'm saying, but we have one point five people, FTEs, working at the chamber.
We don't.
The city of Sandy does. The city does.
Has what?
The Sandy Chamber of Commerce is here in the city.
The city of Sandy government.
Okay.
Does not have one point five FTEs. We don't.
So I'm not talking about.
Looking with someone who plays not factually with the truth all the time, so I need to check it.
Excuse me, when is? Excuse me, when is that happen?
It happens.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, whatever, you want to play that game, that's fine. Um, haha, thank you, Don. So what I'm talking about is not the city of Sandy government, but Sandy has a Chamber of Commerce that has one point five FTEs. So my question is, is by asking them to pivot to tourism, I want to know how one and a half people accomplish that with their duties at the chamber. And that is factual. Thank you.
Some of the money, um, my understanding is will go towards um, increasing the number of hours of uh, Shannon um, over at the chamber. Um, we can also, the chamber can all.
Shaking her head. Is that?
It won't increase our hours. It's going to, it.
Chris, you want to come up to the table to sort of?
Thank you.
Help answer any of those clarifying questions. Thank you for being available tonight.
Yeah, currently Shannon is um, full time. Um, basically full time between the BRC and the chamber. So we actually are still going to be not being able to give Shannon a full week's worth of work. Originally, this funding um, amount was fifteen extra hours a week when the BRC goes away. So um, technically, she's going to still be trying to do fifteen hours with this funding, but it's still going to keep us at one point five because it's, it's probably close to ten hours with that plus her ten at the chamber. So she's still going to just be part time, so we'll still just be one point five.
I, I have a couple of things. Are you done?
I was also just going to add to that also that um, through advertising and promotional channels, um, particularly with a lot of our, uh, the um, chambers partners, uh, we can get um, pretty heavily discounted advertising rates uh, in a lot of different um mediums, particularly, um, they seem to be offering um, a lot of programs having to do with advertising uh, via social media and online. So uh, we would, we could uh, realize a lot of savings, um, because then sometimes they just, you know, fund those things outright. Sometimes they give us a, they'll pay for fifty percent or seventy five percent or whatnot. So there's oppor, opportunities there with, with some of the partners.
Okay, I'm going to talk just a little bit, kind of bigger picture, uh, because I've been involved in the tourism for the Mount Hood, Sandy Mount Hood area for a long time. We have Travel Oregon and they cover all of Oregon. We have Mount Hood Territories and they cover all of Clackamas County, but let's face it, much of their draw is the hood, hood, uh, Mount Hood area. Um, we have this hood Oregon, hood gorge uh, center that's over in Troutdale with Lizzie. Lizzie works for both Mount Hood Territories and this hood gorge entity. And that's a destination ma, marketing organization that's supposed to be focusing on hood, the Mount Hood area and the gorge and including us. And so they had a grant process, um, and they had um, seventy three thousand, right, one hundred dollars that they just awarded. And there was eight projects selected and out of seventy three thousand, the hood side of things got five thousand to the chamber and the other sixty eight thousand went to the gorge, gorge fleet. So I called up Lizzie today and she just asked, I'm, because this has just been a pattern of where most of the money of the hood gorge entity is going to the gorge and not to the hood, not to our side. And how can we get more of that money? Because like you said, we, twenty eight thousand dollars is not going to go very far.
Exactly.
And so, a, and what's frustrating me is we have all these entities and they all have their staff. Shoot, Mount Hood Territories has like nine people that work for them and so, and their focuses should be about this area. And I'm just confused is what are they doing to help market our area? Um, and I asked Lizzie that question and she said, well, we didn't get any grants from the hood side. And I said, well, who was supposed to issue, you know, do a grant? She says, well, they've been meeting with the restaurant businesses and all that. And I'm thinking rest, people with businesses, restaurants and stuff, don't have time to go apply for grants and do projects. That's what I think they think you're supposed to be doing. And, and so I think what's really frustrating for me is we have all these organizations whose job it is to be marketing tourism in our area and yet, you know, they give up, they use a lot of the money for the staff and then they give out a little grant money. And then whoever applies for the grant is expected to do the project and carry it through without really any help. And I don't think that's a real sustainable approach. And I feel like we need to be talking to Mount Hood Territories, Hood Gorge folks and just figure out roles and responsibilities for who's supposed to be doing what because I cannot, it's really hard for me to say we should do yet, uh, you know, Travel Oregon, uh, Mount Hood Territories, Hood Gorge, and now do a fourth level of a destination marketing organization. Not that you wouldn't rocket, Chris, you would definitely, you know, rocket, and I'm not saying that at all. But the idea of having to do a, a fourth level with uh, not enough money, you know? It, it just doesn't feel very effective and efficient. And actually, you know, my thing is let's get money to the ground, let's get some projects, let's, let's get the live cam going at Johnson View Point, let's get all this other stuff. You know, I, I would be willing to, you know, give money to the chamber to kind of help us all work on that for one year to kind of figure out how we can coalesce with these different levels of the, of the, you know, other tourism organizations about defining how we fit in, where we can get more of their money because they've got all the money, you know, a lot more than twenty eight thousand dollars. So how can we kind of re, reform?
So I, I guess if I may, you know, Kathleen, um, the word keep, I keep hearing you saying it is, is like, you know, who, who's going to go make that happen, right? Like, who's going to go do that?
Yes.
And that's what I see this starting to formula, right, is, is this is the organization that is thinking about Sandy at all times? Like, this is the organization that isn't, I don't view all these different groups that you just listed off, like necessarily as competing factions and partners. Uh, I mean, competing factions, I view them as potential partners. Of all these different entities have a vested interest in a mission into promoting the Mount Hood region, but none of them have the mission of promoting specifically Sandy within that. And so what we'd be looking to do is it's really partner with those organizations, identify what our needs are, go after those dollars, but not use the twenty six, the twenty six thousand, I don't view as our entire budget. The twenty, i- i- it's our portion, our share of that budget, but they've got to go leverage that, that, those funds to go and partner with other organizations, leverage third party assets and money and continue to hopefully really get moving into this tourism marketing, you know, element. I think that's we're, you know, and it goes a little bit to my back and forth to start with, with Counselor Smallwood here is, is we do not have a department in the city of Sandy that is doing these things. And so what I'm looking to do is, is not me, just what I think this is an opportunity to do is, is to partner with the chamber or with this organization that's a side partner of the chamber to really hone in on those issues and to really champion those issues and try to move the football forward because otherwise we're just going to keep talking about it. Because we don't have any staff that's dedicated to, to doing this.
Can I ask a question for Kathleen? Just based off what you asked, I just want to clarify what you were talking about. When you said we don't have the staff, were we, I thought that was your job. Were you speaking to Chris or, or?
No, I'm speaking to the Mount Hood Territories. It has nine people on their staff.
But whose job was it to go out there? Is, are you telling, is it an internal city staff position here, like our economic development? To go work this? Or are you talking about the chambers? I wasn't sure who you were when you used the word we.
So, so there's a Mount Hood Territories website for marketing our area. There's a hood gorge website for marketing our area. There's a Travel Oregon uh, website for marketing our area. So now we're talking about doing another website of called Travel Twenty Six to market our area.
And you said?
And so I, I'm just going to tell you, tourists aren't even finding these websites, let alone.
Whose job is it? That, that's what I was trying to get. Whose job, is it, is it something that we should be doing internally as a city? Or are you advocating that it's?
I like the idea, I like the idea of partnering with Chris and Shannon to, to, with people, you know, again, you talked about getting a group together and then working with these folks that have the much bigger pockets, whose job it is to be doing this for us. They're taking our, our, our uh, room, uh, that, what do you call it? The, you know, tack, room, room hotel, hotel room tax.
Yeah.
And and this proposal here is talking about doing a lot of stuff for the boring and Mount Hood villages, but they don't have any skin in the game. They're not giving us any money. It's just the city of Sandy. So we got to right, but, but they're giving a lot of the money to these other organizations. So my thing is, I would rather, instead of starting a fourth level of the organization, I would rather have, work with Chris and Shannon and David to kind of figure out how we can be more effective at getting more of the big, big money that's out there from these existing organizations, rather than starting a fourth level where it's just now becomes a mile wide and an inch deep. I, I don't know if that answered your question.
Yeah, I think it did. Okay. So I, I just want to go on and say, look, um, I, I am supportive of this. I'll just be upfront about that. Um, with that being said though, I'm, I'm more supportive of the, of the funding request as I am the actual travel twenty six. And, and what I say there is I think Kathleen brings in some very good points. In that, um, you know, there's, there seems to be a lot of people out there all chattering and that, and that really makes the conversation skewed compared to here. And so I would rather make an investment in our chamber with the expectation that even supported by our economic development people, that, that you start to bring in these groups and, and really one, get Sandy implemented into those groups very well. And two, start calming some of that chatter and make it a more unified approach. I would be willing to invest into that.
I agree.
What he said.
I, I, yeah, if I may finish.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Um, you know, and then, I mean, to be blunt, uh, come back in a couple of years with, hey, this has been a success and this is the moving forward piece, right? This is what we did. And that, um, that's the way I felt that conversation that's noted in the staff report kind of went. Um, at least that was what I was thinking at the time. May have not conveyed that. Well, totally get there. Um, the other piece about it is, you know, in there, uh, in the staff report, uh, David, just so you know, I, I think it's, I understand what everyone's doing and I understand the goal that we that we're all trying to bring, uh, the businesses may not just be rooted in Sandy, you know, there's lots of organizations up and down the mountain and it's all part of us. But I think moving forward, we have a lot of promise that can really be highlighted. Our winter fest, our uh, mountain festival, our soon to be ski, uh, mount biking park and, and skate park, right? Base camp, what's that?
Basically, yeah, right, yeah, there's another.
Uh, I, I would like to see that stuff highlighted. So, so what I'm trying to say is I, I don't have a problem making an investment in the chamber. I value all of that and I totally value what you guys are trying to do. And that you're trying to do it with very, very, very limited funds and budget and people got to feed their families. Totally get that. But what I would say though is I, I'm not so much supportive of this as I am the trying to get the group together. And if this is what it, if travel twenty six is what it ends up being called, that's fine. But I want a more unified approach up and down the mountain with all of these groups. Sorry.
No, go ahead. I, my only thing, my only thing was, and I, and I support this and I agree with you, Kathleen. I, I'm not opposed to the tourism piece. I just don't know how one and a half persons do all this work. Plus do the work of the chamber and that's, that's where my issue is. We, there's not enough staff there to accomplish all the things that we are throwing out.
Well, I think that's their, I mean, this is their ask. That's their job to figure out what the money, you know, that they, they're looking for.
I have to say, I'm, I have to say, I've been a bit uncertain about whether or not I support this or not. It's been modified and changed over the last several months that we first saw it here with the small committee and all. It bothers me that we spend money outside of the city of Sandy on activities and tourism that doesn't really come to our city. I, I do want city of Sandy money to affect city of Sandy. And I get the part that tourism is not specific to the city limits. And I appreciate uh, Rich, their conversation about mountain festival, winter festival, base camp, probably some others too, that need to be highlighted and such. So if, if I could be assured that there is going to be at least an emphasis about the city of Sandy projects that this money will be focused on. I know, I get the part you're going to have to do up and down the mountain and so on. But I do think that city of Sandy money needs to be applied to city of Sandy. That would, to me, that would be important for me to hear that and it would cause me to be over the edge of saying I'm, I support this. So again, I'm still kind of mixed up about whether or not I want to say yes to this one. Can you describe how this one will affect some of the stuff inside the city as well as, you know, we talked a bunch about mountain different entities?
Right, so, yeah, um, we have spent a lot of time talking with Lizzie and Travel Oregon and all of them. They have approached us and asked us to be a DMO last year and us to do this. Um, so we have their support with this and I do feel that we're going to have to go out for grants to cover it and to make these things happen. And with that, we're going to have to include up the mountain and tourism is, you know, we get people that stop here on their way up there. So we want to make it known that, hey, we've got this here while you're on your way to here. You know, if that's your ultimate destination type thing, but just trying to grab them here. So yes, we're definitely going to focus on Sandy. You know, the majority of our businesses are here in Sandy that are our members, so it's always our focus. Um, but there will be that crossover as well to appease, to be able to get the grants to make this happen as well. So we will, we, we will definitely be focusing on Sandy, absolutely, because that's where my heart is, you know, too.
And, and I would like to reiterate, uh, Rich's conversation about seeing what you've done at the end of the year and tell us, you know, where those uh, events happened and how those monies were used to support Sandy.
Right.
I would, I would want that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just throw my my thoughts on this. I actually, Carl said really rings true to me and also the questions about keeping stuff in Sandy. If this ask were coming in for twenty eight thousand dollars so that we could promote winter fest and skate park, I, 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 yeah. You know, and there, and there was a, a verified way to do that. It's a no brainer for me to approve it. The, the lack of tie into something very specific, given that, and, and maybe it's just because it's just a seed to get something going.
Right.
Which means it's, maybe it's a, a risk that we're taking on, but that's what I want. I'm very reluctant to fund the, this kind of just, you know, squishy kind of money.
So let, let me just ask though, in all reality, right?
Yeah.
So what exactly is going on out in Boring that we're so worried all our money's going to go and be spent on promoting? Or in Dulday?
No.
I, I, I mean.
Don't, don't get my, don't get me wrong that I'm worried that it's going to be spent on the Ivy Bear or something, but
Yeah.
you know, there's going to be some residual. My point though is that at the end of twenty eight thousand dollars, six months from now, what can I point to that was accomplished? And as opposed to if we go out and spend twenty eight thousand on a media consultant to build a very specific ad for Sandy, we would have something. And I'm, I'm not saying, but something in between there is what I'm looking for, right?
There's a, a realization that tourism is not a site-specific spot, especially here on the mountain top and down through to the valley, something for me if you want to include it. So we know that some of this is interrelated and such, but with the money that's being spent is definitely Sandy money, I, I'd, I'd like to see us focus on some of the things that really are in Sandy's ballpark and skate park, I guess now. And so I think that's something that will be really important.
All right, so I'm going to look to try to um, tie council down a little bit for uh, the future requests.
Can I ask real quick a direct question?
Uh, just, okay.
Yeah.
If I am correct, we have done very, we have done better than expected on our transient and taxes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
And my clarification is, so this is a two-year ask, but we're already the second year of the budget cycle, so this would be affecting twenty four, right? So how does that work?
I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, I don't want to speak on your behalf, but um, I think this twenty eight thousand was to be funded in this biennium that we're in currently, so part of it would um, you know, go to your initial, right off the bat, setup, startup, whatever the right terminology is. Um, and then the ongoing expenses over the next thirteen months until the end of the biennium, so there would likely be a future ask, you know, next budget cycle as well.
So I do, okay, so I do support this, right? So I am ready to go. But that said, uh, I feel like, you know, obviously it's been talked about is we've had a couple of different requests come in and it's formed different ways. And we have an organization, a very important community partner organization that is come back several times through this process, trying to figure out a way to partner with us, right? And so we do need to come to a, at least a conclusion for this year and a half's worth of funding here. You know, not tonight, but maybe, but like shortly. Um, is if they come back with a tourism type deal though, that's a lot more Sandy focused on projects like you guys are asking for, are we going to be at a point where we're going to be supporting that? Um, because we just, we need them, we need to give them clear direction as to what they can come back to us with. Um, that, that we're going to give them that thumbs up on. I feel like we owe that to them. Chris?
I'm, I'm just starting at the budget for travel twenty six. And I see forty seven point five hours a month in, for, for each year for, for the labor. And that, at that.
And that, at that cost is roughly ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, for, for that portion of it. I look at that and I say, okay, times that by twelve, that's five hundred and seventy. Divide that by fifty-two weeks, that's ten point nine. So you're looking at eleven hours a week. Of somebody focusing on Travel Twenty Six, which includes collaboration, building a website. Uh, all these things you can't, I, I don't think are, you're not gonna be able to do.
Yeah, great.
But I do support your organization. And I think if I gave you ten thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars to hire someone to do eleven hours worth of work. To collaborate with those other agencies that are already existing. That's something I could support. Um, finding a way to support the chamber to help support Sandy. So I just wanted to get that on the record. I'm not in support of Travel Twenty Six. Uh, but I would support investing in the chamber to build better relationships with the other organizations that already exist. To help grow tourism in Sandy. What do you think?
Well, I would, I would really like to ask a question because when we first came with the B R C, we were told you wanted tourism.
I do.
We've struggled really hard with this. And we went and got another grant so that we could start figuring out how to do this. It's not something you can just hit the ground running with. You need time to build that up, to talk to these entities. And, um, and to get grant funding, we have to include people outside of the county, because that's what they've told us to. So. I'm kind of confused on what you guys want from us as tourism. So I am just like, we've tried to come up with, you know, a proposal. And and honestly, I. I think the frustration, I'm sure, Sandy, I'd like to know specifically what you guys want, instead of trying to guess what you want and what you're gonna approve. I think what's.
Yeah.
Difficult for us is to be. The funder for coming up with another level of tourism promotion for the mountain and stuff when they're not. Kicking in any money. And and things like that. So we are, we do, I think what we want is we want tourism, but we want it focused on Sandy. And what I would like to see, I guess, if I could offer proposals, I would like to, you know, again, allocate the money and then. Put together a group of, you know, I'm gonna volunteer my services, you, David, and whoever else is interested in sitting down with Lizzie and. Uh, the head of the Mount Hood Territories, whoever that is now, I forget their name.
Suma.
Huh? Such, yeah, Smer. Um, you know, it's sitting down and figuring out how can we. Go after. More grants and get more funding for promoting all these things that we're trying to happen, make happen in Sandy. The Winter Fest, the new skate park, the, uh, camp, base camp stuff. And the live cam. These are all projects that would be fantastic for us. But somebody's kinda has to, you know, we have to kind of narrow down the projects and then apply for the grants. And then do the projects. And that would be a huge benefit for our organism, for our town. And so just focus more. And not duplicate things that those people should be doing for the mounted corridor, because they're taking their money. So that's kind of what I would say. But I'm willing to do that and give you the money to help, help, you know, be the leader to kind of get us together and organize it. And I don't think it'll take that long. I'm not looking for a lot, a huge amount of, like, results. You know, it's more kind of organizational results, not a project, you know, hopefully some grant funding obligations here in the future, but. But in the initially, it's just kind of organizing us and getting us all on the same page. That's my expectation or hope for, for that.
Mayor, does, with this. Type of effort, would this fall under economic development as far as the department?
I mean.
Generally, there's, sure. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion then. And we'll see where it goes. But I'd like to move that. Uh, we approve the funding request from the Sandy, Sandy Area Chamber of Commerce as included in the agenda packet with the following additions that. The Economic Development. Board, is that what we call it? The board, the advisory board?
Yes, correct.
Advisory Board, take an active role in oversight and accountability. Um, so that we. Have some measure of prog, report back. As to how the money is used, so that. When the money's out in the next biennium, we have better data. That's my motion. It's very lengthy. I hope Jeff got it all.
Answer a second.
I'll second that.
Uh, do we not have, do we not have a chance to add some?
There's a discussion, you can, you can make an amendment to the motion.
Absolutely. I I just wanna discuss that. So I. Feel like right now with the, I mean, I. I guess my concern with that is, is at what capacity. Does the Economic Advisory Board? Uh, that oversight look like for the chamber? Because I want them. Uh, now, if we're talking that be where they report back. At the end, really, we're talking about thirteen months, right? Yeah, thirteen-ish months. In thirteen months, if that's where they report back and then that super reports back to us on this was a success, this was a failure, then that's fine. But I don't. Think it's right that we. Expect the chamber to come forward and 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 ask us for the, the money each time they come down, if that's what you're looking for.
I recommend you streamline the amendment.
Or make amendment to streamline it then. Yeah.
Uh, I just wanna amend the motion.
Yeah, I wanna amend the motion, but I I want the, um, this is what I want. I I wanna fund. Um, the chamber with the twenty eight thousand dollars as requested for the rest of the biennium. And after the conclusion of, uh. The budget, I'd like them to come report what their successes were Sandy, whatever those are that you imagine. And how that that money was implemented. To the Economic Advisory Board to be brought to the council.
In regards to tourism?
In regards to tourism.
I'll second that. Okay, so, um, council, so that we're clear. There's a motion, a sec, in a second on the table from Counselor Hokumson. Then there's been an amendment that was seconded made by Counselor Sheldon. We're gonna first vote on the amendment to the motion for, um, Counselor Hokumson. Uh, that's been seconded, uh, that's been made by Counselor Sheldon and seconded by Counselor Walker. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. We are now to the motion. Uh, that has been amended by, um, Counselor Sheldon, but originally made by Counselor Hokumson. And seconded by.
Uh, Counselor Walker.
Counselor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we're, we're vote, we're now voting on what, on the. What you said.
Okay, I get it.
We're now, we're now voting on what, on what Rick said. All, all those, we just. You guys, first we had to amend the motion. Now we gotta vote on the amended motion, okay? So now we're voting on the amended motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, Chris. Really appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep. All right, moving ahead, uh, Transportation Systems Development Charge Discussion. Another easy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Um, so I'm sure Council, oh, we've had a couple of discussions recently about transportation S D Cs. Um, specifically the methodology, a couple of presentations from F C S Group. Uh, the last time we had this discussion was on May sixth, um, and since that time, there was, um, uh. Uh, direction from the mayor to bring this back and have a. Uh, revisit of, um, the S T C methodology and, um, potential rate increase. And I think I made this point at the last meeting, so I'll make it again today. Um. Methodology and rates don't have to be adopted at the same exact time. More often than not, they are. We spent a lot of time talking about the methodology, um, at the last meeting, but didn't really touch on. Um. Uh, the appetite for a potential rate increase or modification with the Transportation S T C. And so tonight's, uh, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to talk about, um. Any rate increase or modification that may be, uh, uh, acceptable to the council. In the staff report, I have a couple of tables in here. Um, that show the S D Cs for neighboring communities, the cities that are listed in that table are the same that you saw in the presentation from F C S. Uh, the only thing that I added there was just the last time their transportation system plan was updated. As well as any significant update to their S T C methodology. Um. And so if there's not information provided, it's because I could not locate that information online. This is what I was able to readily contain. And then there's also a table that shows total S D Cs, um, for all utilities, not just transportation, but water, wastewater, parks. And stormwater where applicable for all of the cities in Clackamas County, just to sort of paint a picture of where Sandy falls in line with other, uh, communities in the county. Um, I'm sure that there's. Probably more of an interest in the seven of you having a conversation and listening to me talk, um, more about. The staff report, so I'm gonna turn it over to you to have that discussion, but happy to answer questions. Kelly's also up here to talk about, um. Answer any questions related to the T S P or methodology that he can answer from his work with F C S and, uh.
This is where you close the gate and we're stuck in there.
Yeah, right. Uh, well, thank you, Tyler. Thank you for that. Uh, a couple of words I just wanted to say as we kick off this discussion is. Uh, going back to our work session that we had a couple of weeks ago now. Um, obviously, we, as Tyler said, we spent a lot of time on the methodology. Uh, but the conversation was thrown off a bit, I, um, and mine as well, especially mine. Um, based on, uh, some frustration that we weren't getting the staff report that we had originally. Kind of hoped for and asked for. And so I just wanna start this with, I think we need to increase our communication back and forth between staff and council. Make sure that we're not, you know, having that as a continued problem. Uh, that said, uh, you know, if we want to adopt, adopt, adopt. A higher, uh, S T C for transportation for our streets. We've got, we've got a clock. We've got to do a ninety-day. Uh, noticing period to get back into that public hearing. So if we gave that, you know, finger point today, hey, we'd like to get this S T C, we wanna do that, we're now ninety days away. From adapt, adopting that. So go back to thinking about our conversations with Jenny, water wastewater, those probably aren't gonna be ready by then. Uh, but we are getting closer to that point in which those could potentially be ready. I'll tell you, as I look at this staff report, as I've done my research, especially from our last meeting to this. We've gotta replenish our, our transportation, uh, street fund. We have to do it. Um, we have continually, um, um. This city in the past has kicked the can down the road on rate increases that need to take place. Uh, as a result, we've continually had to put it on the back of our citizens more and more as these developments are not paying. For our, uh, for our infrastructure that we know that we need. And as I look at what's being proposed here in front of us. Uh, especially if we just go with the medium and high priority projects, I mean, that's. A minimum. You know, we're at nine thousand, seven hundred and sixteen S D Cs. The average. When you scroll down on the staff report to look at the comparables. Is roughly ninety-four. So we're just hovering, if we go to the ninety-seven, we're just hovering slightly above what the average is. And so regardless, if you guys wanna do that or see what I see is, we need to have a conversation about whether or not we wanna adopt a higher S T C for streets. And if we want to, let's give a collective or at least a majority nod to our staff to bring that back to us in ninety days.
I think everyone knows where I stand on this one. It's. I think it's very important that the community and everyone understand that when. If we. We don't. Bring that fee up high enough to cover that cut line of what's going to be covered. Then. Their rates pick up the difference, or taxes pick up the difference, or some other fund, which basically falls on the, the general citizen. So. The whole point of developers paying their fair share as opposed to paying our fair share. And that's, some people misconstrue that. They think that when we jack S D Cs up. That somehow we're. We're. Taking away from these, you know, charging these, these new homes and these new people are coming here more than we should, but it's. Paying their fair share of the infrastructure that either was already invested. Or that needs to be invested to make that new development happen. So for me, uh, that, that cut bar that you talked about is my, like, my minimum. To me, that's, that's an absolute minimum of where I think we should be, and even then. Maybe, maybe even a little more, you know, because that's, that's still, there's a lot of projects underneath that that aren't.
They're offered.
That then everybody else gets to cover. Or we end up with pockets.
Carl. Um. I'm pretty sure that we need to raise the S D Cs for transportation. But I am still frustrated as can be about the fact that there, we only see this thing one at a time. And I, I thought I got. The message out when we did the Parks and Trails S D Cs. And I felt like we really raised the thing much higher than I thought we should have. And the only thing that I have the argument about that, that it should have been lower, was that I was looking at the others, but there was no proposal for the rest of the S D Cs. In this city. And I. I guess I stand.
Are you going down to the next table? Cause I think this report does have what you're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely, it does.
Absolutely does.
Go, go down the very next table.
Look, look at the chart.
Right there. That table has the side by side for the major S D Cs and where we sit, I mean, some of the, your cities.
And and the. But one, the parts one is up to date, correct? This is our current parts.
Correct. Well, look, look at the over-under on that chart. Sandy's at twenty-eight percent off the average count. Um, if you add the twenty-eight percent onto it, you're gonna put our total S T C, S D Cs around thirty-five thousand. That difference between the twenty-four thousand and thirty-five is about eleven thousand dollars. Um, I, I did the math, I'm sorry, and I'm, I'm just doing it off the top of my head, but I think it's actually nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollar difference. So that is B. If you get us to average of all those other counties for all of our S D Cs. B would be our clear choice. If you wanna go higher, you're gonna go to C. And. What I'm saying is, if you choose B today. And we haven't even assessed the other areas. We're gonna be higher than nine. Because those are gonna increase later. There's no doubt about it. And if we go to thirteen today. That's gonna put us even higher, and we're gonna be competing against the likes of Happy Valley and Lake Oswego. As communities, which our, our community's not in. So I would be an advocate for going with B. As the minimum number, knowing that we're gonna add more at a later date when we view S D Cs for the other.
You have to go back.
So let me finish my conversation then. So it's, I get the part and I, I understand. And I've had conversations with appraisers who've said. Sandy's leaving money on the table. We are one of the cheapest cities, um, in the metro area for that. And it, this chart shows that. So I know we need to increase. But how do we increase that? What are we paying for? What is this? I'll go back to the storm water. Um, F T Cs, what are we getting when we start raising those things up? And I'm not sure that we have a balance between what the Parks and Trails large increase was, whatever that time was in the past. Versus what we need to do with transportation, what we can afford for our wastewater and on and on. And I think that's, that's really a frustration for me and I. I, I understand that the staff is busy. I understand that staff has got so much going on their plate, it's hard for them to continue, but. I thought we had an agreement that that was something that they would be presenting to us. That we would have a balanced understanding of what we're paying for.
Yeah, I'm frustrated that they didn't make that agreement, but I'm also not willing to allow this community to wait to get the needed paid infrastructure because they didn't do it. Are we, oh, look, are we thinking we could move ahead with? B as a proposal for S T C for stack direction, because that's all we have to get to tonight, right? This direction. Bring your proposal back for B.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
If there's no motion, do we need a motion?
Well, well, I mean, we got, we got a proper, we gotta properly provide staff.
Motion to give them direction.
Yeah.
Is, I'd make a motion that we, um, authorize the staff to move forward, um, on S T C methodology for option D.
Answer a second.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Walker and a second by Counselor Hokumson to move forward, uh.
Mayor, can I interrupt you before you take that vote real quick, just as a point of clarification? I, I know, but I, I just, I wanna avoid some, uh, that's gonna potentially present an issue the way that that was explicitly stated. So. That the. Understanding that I think staff took away from the last meeting was that methodology is methodology. We wanna have the most flexible methodology. That there is. Ignore the rate. You want a methodology that you can feasibly have all these projects that were listed in the T S P, correct?
That's correct.
Um, Counselor Walker, the way that you, uh, made that motion. At least as I think Elliot and I took it was adopting the methodology that supported. The rate for B, which was ninety-seven sixteen, um. If you're wanting the most flexible methodology, but just discussing a rate, a resolution, or.
Just leave, just leave the methodology.
Leave the method, methodology.
I would like to restate my motion that, see, it's a suggestion motion language, none. I make a motion that, uh, we give direction to staff to move forward with the, um, transportation S D Cs for the. Um. B option of high and medium projects, total nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars.
Is there a second?
So, well, to the restated, is there a second?
Well, to the restated, is there a second?
I'll second the restated one.
Alright, there's a motion by Councilor Walker and a second by Councilor Hokumson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays? Motion carries. Alright, moving ahead.
It's okay, I'm holding to my.
Report from the city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just one last comment on the, the transportation SDC, as, as far as timeline goes. We will, um, notice the public hearing for the methodology adoption with the September third.
The first meeting is September.
September third, um, date, so I believe now we have everything we need to do that notice and continue to move forward with the methodology update, so thank you for that.
The day after, whatever the day.
The Tuesday.
Alright.
It's the third. I have just a very brief, um, city manager report tonight, and it's actually posing a question. Uh, for you all, uh, as you know, and I think I indicated at the last meeting, trying to hammer down a time to meet with, um, some folks from Clackamas County. County to discuss homelessness, um, within City of Sandy services available, rapid rehousing and that sort of thing. In my discussion with, um, some county folks today, one of the questions that was posed to me was, um, you know, making sure that they had a concise list of the things that you would like to hear from them and the questions that you would like, that you would like to have answered. From the county, and so, um, you can either shoot out some ideas right now or send me an email later this week, but what they're really hoping for is the specific questions. Or concerns that you all have with, um, homelessness in Sandy, so that they can be prepared with their presentation and conversation with you at an upcoming work session. To address those questions and concerns. I know the main thing that I've heard has been the housing vouchers and, um, homelessness staying. Uh, at the local Best Western, but if there are other, uh, concerns or issues as they relate to homelessness, if you could give me those, so we can make sure that, um. H three S can adequately respond to those when they are here.
I, I, I would, if I were you, I'd just, I would inquire the leadership of our law enforcement department if they have any questions or, um, issues. That they would like to have raised at that meeting, even as easy enough as. Are they properly aware of all the resources available to them when interacting with somebody, you know?
Is the homeless task force gonna meet prior to them coming?
We can try to get a meeting scheduled for the homelessness task force. You know, this conversation with the county, um, that I had today really sort of stemmed from. Um, the recurring conversations or recurring questions rather that I've had around rapid rehousing and, and the vouchers that have been used at. Um, the Best Western. And so that's where this started from, which was probably less of a homelessness task force conversation and more of getting a response to the council as far as. What's happened in the past, what's currently happening and what the future might look like with that program. You know, recognizing the need of trying to get that information out to you sooner rather than later. And the county does have availability of both of the, our June meetings to come out and have a conversation, so. If we wanna do a work session with the county at the second meeting in June. We could probably schedule a homelessness task force meeting earlier in the month and have a, a larger, broader conversation. Or if we wanna state a just to, um, uh, the housing component that is currently the issue that I hear most about. Um, it's scheduled out as early as June third.
Yeah, I would just ask the, the task force members there that, you know, know more about it. Than I do as to what questions we should be asking or what information or plans, you know. Do you guys feel like you have that or?
I, I, I'm totally fine with that, I mean, we, we, we have lots of different platforms.
I, I will throw out one question I have, is I'd like to know where the, um, residents that are being rehoused are from. Are we rehousing Sandy citizens, is it local area ones, or are we, uh, bringing people from outside our community and rehousing them within our? And if so, uh, why are they not being rehoused within the communities?
And I continually wondered is, is my understanding is our last point in count was a desert.
The numbers I keep hearing of how much it's servicing, it's more than that. Obviously made an impact on our transient room tax, so.
Yeah, um, so if you have any questions or things that you think of throughout the week, feel free to send those, um, over to me so I can include them in my correspondence. And then, uh, yeah.
One, one more, cause I, I, I may not, um, if we have this, the second meeting in June. I will at least not be a person. Um, so with that being said, I'd like to know, again, especially if you're bringing out housing services, what, what's, or I mean, housing people. What services is the county, uh, providing that's not, you know? Cause obviously we don't get the metro money, right? So what services is H three S in the county providing for those? To move them on to more long-term housing? And how are we being guaranteed that we are receiving the same level of services? As those, the municipalities have followed in the metro area. Metro being the metro tax area.
Alright, uh, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your topics.
Done. I think I've said a lot too much tonight, Eric. Thanks. Alright.
Yeah, we got that Urban Renewal Board meeting afterwards.
I'll pick a pull up and put one more on there. I seem to be having struggles with ODOT again in my world, and they, um. Seem to be letting several of their, what appears to me, their responsibilities let slide. For one example. Ballards that are, I think they're glued to the sides of the roads. By ways to keep people from exposed, jumping up onto the high sidewalks with their cars. But I see them laying all over the place, like they've been knocked over, and, uh, just wondering what's the. There should be some responsibility for keeping them off the road for one. In front of my office, there's two of them, and they've been broken. And set up, just set there, and then knocked over again, and then set up and knocked over, and I'm not sure that the ODOT is doing the work, I think. Somebody walking by is probably throwing those around, so there seems to be some problems with that. And then the other one that ODOT. I think should be doing is is out here by the new sidewalk that was, goes between about the. The county offices, the clinic offices out to Vista Loop. There's a lot of grass and weeds and stuff that. You know, I see the highway being mowed, and I'm wondering, is that their responsibility? It's inside the city limits, but in terms of, uh. What looks like to me the next step of a fire hazard, or at least something that's not good looking. That was no mo may for the bees.
Low mo.
So I don't know if that's something you can answer now or they're wrong, but that just.
I can't answer that now, but I will look into it, and similar to, um, two weeks ago, I'll send a follow-up email mid-week with responses to.
And then, uh, real quick, information purposes, uh, the Blackwater watershed council just hired a new director. And I was hoping to get her up here to introduce her to the group. She's, um, uh, Mary Legabo. I think that's the way you say her name. I, she just got, um, the first time she represented the board was on Thursday, so. Tried to identify how her name is spelled, but, uh, we got a new director for the Blackwater watershed, so. And I'm, I'll try to get her up here sometime. Yes, we're gonna meet, and then I'll wanna bring her up here.
That's it, great, thanks.
Yappy Hour was fabulous. The Parks and Rec Department folks just rocked it. Um, knocked it out of the park, so to speak, as no pun intended, but I swear there was like two, at least two hundred and fifty dog, you know, I don't know how many dogs. Lot of people, two hundred and fifty people there. Um, it was wonderful. I really appreciate all the staff's work at organizing that. Um, I know Carol did a lot of, uh, work on that, so everybody there at the department deserves kudos. The library, um, Eldac meeting that we talked about last time is, was tonight. I would have liked to have gone to it, but the conflict. Um, I understand that Bethany is representing us there, and Kathleen Drane went, um, to sit in the audience, is what Sarah said. Um, we have a new library board member for the Hoodland. Part of the, uh, district, and we just interviewed her and kind of selected her tonight, and you'll get, uh, uh, in the next, I guess, at the next meeting. Will probably be, uh, nomin, you know, blessing her formally, but she's amazing. She's very, um. Very active. Her Goodreads is up to, you know, that, that's how many. Goodreads keeps track of how many books she reads, I think versus like eight hundred and fifty or something. So she's a real big reader, and. Uh, she also was, um, with Kate Holler, one of the founders of that Mount Hood Unida, uh, Hispanic group up in Hoodland. And so she's just got a lot of stuff to recommend her, and I think we're, we're very lucky to have her on. Um, the swings at Tupper, I know that the new Tupper Park, um, play structure got put in. There, I did hear some comments about why are there swings like there were before, and I'm hoping that, I know we do still have some money in the contingency. And if, you know, we need another thirty or forty thousand dollars to set up a swing set there, that would be, I'd love to see that. So, yeah, that, it's pretty important. Swings are kind of, you know, kind of a needed thing. Um, and similarly to that, we had a great time reviewing the, um, uh, Cedar Park, um, development as it is to date. And it, it just looks so exciting. One of the things that, that they were describing to us is that the whole slope between kind of the toilet and the. Plaza area and parking lot and all that, going down towards the pump track is like a one to four slope. And my concern, that's kind of where we were talking about having, you know, where people could kind of watch the events, watch their kids, whatever. A one to four slope is a twenty-five percent slope, and so my water bottle will not stand up on a one to four slope. And so I kind of mentioned about maybe kind of putting in one to two retaining walls, not across the whole slope, maybe if you wanna leave some. Sleding potential or something, but at least to kind of create some more later ground than twenty-five percent. Um, so again, that's something that if we have some extra money, or we have some, uh, you know. Extra funding somewhere to be able to kind of afford a couple of, um, sections of some retaining wall there. The contractor was there and he said, yeah, they could do that, they, you know, would be no problem for them to do it, um, as we all talked about it as a group, it wasn't. So, so that's something that I would, you know, think that in the long term would really help to have these events and all where people can kind of sit. Sit and not slide down slope. Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich.
And not a whole lot. Uh, I do wanna say I noticed that the center medians, probably thanks to Carl, have been, uh. No, that is very, that's very pleasant to be high, so thank you. With that being said, I have seen a few around town, uh, one of them near, um, the Barco and Van Fleet. Where the opposite side of the road, like it wasn't, I don't know if that falls on the property owner or if it's a city thing, but the brush gets kind of high. And then it does create, um, traffic impacts. Uh, it's hard to see, especially if you're in a car. Um, so I think, uh, I always thought that about the center medians, and I, I, I think that about those areas. I don't know if it was just missed or. Maybe part, uh, Carl's voice was just.
Talk about next thing.
The, the last thing I have is, um, you know, I had a conversation with a community member. Um, and it was in, can, you know, about the new Cedar, um, Cedar Park, uh, base camp. Uh, specifically around, you know, uh, and, and which I do agree, um. I've, I've worked in a few different places, one of them being Lincoln City, but had a very robust skate park, and those, those things can go on the two ways. I think they can be very good for the community and bring lots of opportunities, specifically around the, um, different events that they hold. They can also be quite problematic. Uh, and so I think, uh, to this person's point, the, uh, the trick to keeping those from becoming problematic is proper programming. And so I just wanted to put that on the radar, uh, as we move closer to the development of that park and the implementation of it being open. And for use, ready for use. Uh, I would think it would be awesome if we could start, uh, you know, how, whatever that looks like, but seeing some programming options. So that it doesn't become, so that it becomes a positive thing for the community, not a negative thing for the community. Absolutely. I think now would be a good time to get that conversation though. That's all I have.
Yeah, I just wanna second what Kathleen said about Yappy Hour. It was, it was a great turnout. Uh, I think everybody had a great time, including the vendors. And, uh, I think, uh, could you get rid of all your balls?
Almost.
Almost. So it was, uh, just super cool what, what the vendors brought to share and, and, uh. I think most people stayed there the entire time. Um, so, uh, great event. Great job myself.
I'll defer, I have nothing substantial with that.
Yeah, just was on that tour, was awesome. Uh, cool to see the development of that campus. Um, I, I do, uh. I, I don't know about retaining walls and all that. Yeah, sounds right, but, but I think just to Kathleen's general point is whether it's a spectator there to watch an event. Or a parent there to watch their child, you know, let's just make sure that that, like, the, the experience is, is what we all want it to be. Um, that did some grand openings over the last couple of weeks, so it's good to see new businesses coming into our community. Um, with that, that's, that's my report. I'll go ahead and close this out so we can get to this Urban Renewal Board meeting. Thanks, everybody.